Good morning. Today is Thursday, December 16, 2021. Commissioners Court is meeting in the special open session. This morning, we're joined by ASL interpreters Dario Garcia and Bianca Garcia. Would you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
We can still fly.
Public for widget stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is public comment. At this time, we have no one that's signed up for individual public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak, not, they will take no action on item three. Item number four from the regular agenda. Approve the updated election precinct lines as depicted in map A and the renumbered precincts, numbers 1 through 221, which were updated as a result of redistricting following the 2020 decennial census. Further authorize the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court to sign the order redrawing the El Paso County election precinct boundaries.
Good morning. Judge Commissioners Lisa Wise, El Paso County Elections Administrator. Today, I'm going to present to you the election precincts for El Paso County, which are scheduled to go into effect January 1, 2022. Before I begin the discussion on this item, I just wanted to thank a few people who really helped our department make this possible and to meet this expedited deadline. Ana Schumacher from County Attorneys, Ramon Bracamontes from County Admin, your Court, the Commissioners Court, and your Redistricting Committee, who sent us amazingly clean lines to start with, which really helped us get a jumpstart. A temporary worker we hired, Reina Beltran, who's been working since the beginning. Our Assistant Elections Administrator, Tony Rivera. And last but definitely not least, Mr. Ruben Gómez, who has worked every day since we received those maps to make this deadline. Without them, we would probably not be here today. Attached to this item is the formal order, which must be approved by the Court. It's included in the backup documentation. Our next steps will be to publish in the newspaper for three weeks, post this information online, send out the updated voter certificates as required by law with a deadline of January 12, and send notice and map to the Texas Secretary of State. All of these things are outlined in code, and we are on path to make those deadlines. The number of our El Paso County election precincts has increased from 208 to 221 because of the redistricting and obviously the increase in population. Much of our time was spent on the east side of El Paso County. As everyone knows, that's where the development continues and the population continues to grow. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have and any specific questions you may have on details that I can't answer. Mr. Gómez will be able to.
And thank you for recognizing it's, you know, we get a lot of accolades of how we do things, and this sort of added to that professionalism. And I'd like to add you as well, because I think you've done an amazing job of keeping things going for us. And thank all the team. Ramon, thank you so much. When you walked in, I knew it had something to do with mapping. If you're around anywhere nearby, it had something to do with you. So, Ramon, thank you very much. And everybody else that you recognize, Lisa. But really thank you and your team. It's been exceptional.
Good morning, Judge. Oh, Lisa, if we were going to say anything else?
No, I just was asking if there were any questions and otherwise.
Any questions, comments?
Judge, may I?
Olgin?
Judge?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Commissioner Olgin, go ahead.
Hi, Lisa, good morning. When I was comparing the map that was delivered to my office, and thank you for that, with the precincts that are listed, you know, at the bottom where it lists all of the precincts, there's one on there that I think actually belongs in Commissioner Leon's. Because I logged into the mapping software that the commission used, and I didn't find it in my precincts, but I think I found it in Commissioner Leon's precinct. It's 190. Could you just double-check that, please?
Yes, I will check 190. I know that is one of the precincts that we did adjust.
Yeah, if you could just, if you could just ask your team to check that, please. Thank you.
Would we have to wait on the vote because of that question?
I don't think so, Judge, because I think that was just a printing error on the map that was delivered to me.
Hi, good morning. My name is Ruben Gómez. I'm part of the redistricting. And precinct 90 used to be out there in Saragossa by 190, by Saraplex. Now, since that was a low population and it was a zero split, we combined it with 160. So down south on by the I-10 and Socorro Complex, that number, old number 190, became part of that 155 because of the state House Representative breaking number 155. So old 190, just the number precinct, became a new precinct, old number to 155. But it's under, I mean, Commissioner 3.
Okay, so 190 does belong the new 190, I guess.
Yes, that precinct 155 got split, so we got renumbered only with the old 190.
Okay. Okay, okay, got it. Thank you so much.
You're okay with that, so, okay?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Eric Rosales Miguel Leoni, Assistant County Attorney. Unless there's any further questions, the motion would be to approve the updated election precinct lines and then to also authorize El Paso County Judge and County Commissioners to sign the order redrawing El Paso County election precinct boundaries.
Okay, so moved?
Second.
What was the comment, Betsy?
Just clarifying that the Court in its motion is approving the precinct lines as depicted and the renumbered precincts, which were updated as a result of redistricting following the 2020 decennial census. Further authorize the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court to sign the order redrawing the El Paso County election precinct boundaries.
Okay, so moved?
Second.
What was the comment, Betsy?
Just clarifying that the Court in its motion is approving the precinct lines as depicted and the renumbered precincts, which were updated as a result of redistricting. And further authorizing the County Judge and County Commissioners to sign the order withdrawing El Paso County election precinct boundaries.
Perfect, thank you. Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
You're muted, Commissioner. Robinson? You're still muted, Commissioner. Click on the microphone icon, Mayela.
Miguel, could you, could you point out where it is? Because it's sometimes hard to see.
If you move your cursor, you'll be able to see the microphone icon pop up. We're calling Mayela. Can we call them, call them on the phone and still see their webcam, Erica? Or their audio?
Yes, as long...
Good morning. Today is Thursday, December 16, 2021. Commissioners Court is meeting in the special open session. This morning, we're joined by ASL interpreters Dario Garcia and Bianca Garcia. Would you please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance?
Public for widget stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is public comment. At this time, we have no one that's signed up for individual public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak. Not, they will take no action on item three. Item number four from the regular agenda. Approve the updated election precinct lines as depicted in map A and the renumbered precincts, numbers 1 through 221, which were updated as a result of redistricting following the 2020 decennial census. Further authorize the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court to sign the order redrawing the El Paso County election precinct boundaries.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners Lisa Wise, El Paso County Elections Administrator. Today, I'm going to present to you the election precincts for El Paso County, which are scheduled to go into effect January 1, 2022. Before I begin the discussion on this item, I just wanted to thank a few people who really helped our department make this possible and to meet this expedited deadline. Anna Schumacher, I'm sorry, Anna Schumacher from County Attorneys, Ramon Bracamontes from County Admin, your court, the Commissioners Court, and your redistricting committee, who sent us amazingly clean lines to start with, which really helped us get a jumpstart. A temporary worker, we hired Reina Beltran, who's been working since the beginning, our Assistant Elections Administrator, Tony Rivera, and last but definitely not least, Mr. Ruben Gómez, who has worked every day since we received those maps to make this deadline. Without them, we would probably not be here today. Attached to this item is the formal order, which must be approved by the court. It's included in the backup documentation. Our next steps will be to publish in the newspaper for three weeks, post this information online, send out the updated voter certificates as required by law with a deadline of January 12th, and send notice and map to the Texas Secretary of State. All of these things are outlined in code, and we are on path to make those deadlines. The number of our El Paso County election precincts has increased from 208 to 221 because of the redistricting and obviously the increase in population. Much of our time was spent on the east side of El Paso County. As everyone knows, that's where the development continues and the population continues to grow. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and any specific questions you may have on details that I can't answer, Mr. Gómez will be able to.
And thank you for recognizing it's, you know, we get a lot of accolades of how we do things, and this sort of added to that professionalism. And I'd like to add you as well, because I think you've done an amazing job of keeping things going for us. And thank all the team. Ramon, thank you so much. When you walked in, I knew it had something to do with mapping. If you're around anywhere nearby, it had something to do with you. So Ramon, thank you very much, and everybody else that you recognize, Lisa, but really thank you and your team. It's been exceptional.
Morning, Judge. Oh, Lisa, if we were going to say anything else?
No, I just was asking if there were any questions and otherwise.
Any questions? Comments?
Judge, may I?
Olgin?
Judge?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, Commissioner Olgin, go ahead.
Hi, Lisa, good morning. When I was comparing the map that was delivered to my office, and thank you for that, with the precincts that are listed, you know, at the bottom where it lists all of the precincts, there's one on there that I think actually belongs in Commissioner Leon's, because I logged into the mapping software that the commission used, and I didn't find it in my precincts, but I think I found it in Commissioner Leon's precinct. It's 190. Could you just double-check that, please?
Yes, I will check 190. I know that is one of the precincts that we did adjust. Check on it.
Yeah, if you could just, if you could just ask your team, check that, please. Thank you.
Definitely will.
Would we have to wait on the vote because of that question, or?
I don't think so, Judge, because I think that was just a printing error on the map that was delivered to me.
Hi, good morning. My name is Ruben Gómez. I'm part of the redistricting. And precinct 90 used to be out there in Saragossa by 190, by Saraplex. Now, since that was a low population and it was a zero split, we combined it with 160. So down south on by the I-10 and Socorro complex, that number, old number 190, became part of that 155 because of the state House Representative breaking number 155. So old 190, just the number precinct, became a new precinct, old number to 155. But it's under, I mean, Commissioner 3.
Okay, so 190 does belong the new 190, I guess.
Yes, that precinct 155 got split, so we got renumbered only with the old 190.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay, got it. Thank you so much.
You're okay with that, so, okay?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners, Eric Rosales and Miguel Leoni, Assistant County Attorney. Unless there's any further questions, the motion would be to approve the updated election precinct lines and then to also authorize El Paso County Judge and County Commissioners to sign the order redrawing El Paso County election precinct boundaries.
Okay, so moved?
Second.
What was the comment, Betsy?
Just clarifying that the court in its motion is approving the precinct lines as depicted and the renumbered precincts, which were updated as a result of redistricting. And further authorizing the county judge and county commissioners to sign the order withdrawing the election precinct boundaries.
Perfect, thank you.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
You're muted, Commissioner? Robinson? You're still muted, Commissioner? Can click on the microphone icon, Mayela?
Miguel, could you, could you point out where it is? Because it's sometimes hard to see.
If you move your cursor, if you move your cursor, you'll be able to see the microphone icon pop up. We're calling Mayela. Can we call them, call them on the phone and still see their webcam, Erica? Or their audio?
Yes, as long, yeah, that's fine. As long as there's, the audio is fine, even if it's through the phone or through camera, that would be acceptable, as long as he keeps his video on, please, thank you.
Lisa, while we're waiting, just to let you know, I just got back from some conferences I went to, and they used El Paso County as an example of how, excuse me, how to do things right. They're very complimentary of Betsy Keller, but they used us as a whole as what we're doing right. So it was so nice to sit back and so many other counties represented, and they all knew that whatever we're doing, we're doing it right.
Right, I agree. We said that at our conference.
Thank you for being that big part of it.
Thank you. That's, I mean, I think that's the leadership that we get, and, you know, we're lucky. We go to election and conferences, and we hear from people who really struggle with their court for support, and we never have anything but, you know, amazing support. So thank you. I'm grateful, I know our department's grateful for that, too.
Thank you, Lisa.
Okay, Commissioner Robinson, if we could just have you turn down your computer speakers and only leave the speaker on your phone, please.
Okay, got it.
Oh, there it is.
Commissioner Robinson, if we could have your vote, please?
I want now, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, my vote is here.
Oh, perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number five. Approve and authorize the El Paso County Commissioners Court to inform the county clerk of the adoption of the order redrawing El Paso County election precinct boundaries to enable the county clerk to deliver a copy of the public notice and map of precinct boundary changes to the Texas Secretary of State pursuant to sections 42.035D and 42.037A of the Texas Election Code. At the request of the county attorney's office, could we please have a motion to delete this item? So moved?
Second.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Erica, just the delete, I mean?
Yes, good morning, Judge and Commissioners, Eric Rosales and Miguel Leoni, Assistant County Attorney. So this is very simple. Essentially, with Lisa Wise as our Elections Administrator, she actually has the authority in El Paso, in El Paso County to make this filing, to send this notice, and so it's not necessary to have any other individual do it. That's the only reason, Judge.
Okay, thank you, Erica.
Thank you.
Item number six. Approve and authorize the publication of a public notice regarding the redrawing of voter precinct boundaries once a week for three consecutive weeks, as required by statute, and authorize the county auditor to pay for the publication out of money set aside for redistricting in general fund, general administrative operations contingencies.
Good morning again, El Paso County Elections Administrator Lisa Wise. This is just a kind of a extension of what the last piece was, which is that we will be posting the notice in the El Paso Inc. December 19th, December 26th, January 2nd, and then again, I will send that information on to the Texas Secretary of State as required by law.
Moved to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you.
Item number seven. Receive a presentation from the Planning and Development Department and the Camino Real Regional Mobility Authority regarding the county major capital transportation portfolio.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners Salonzo, Associate Director of the Planning and Development Department. The court had requested an update on the vehicle registration program fee. However, the timing placing the item on a special session didn't work out a few times, but we are glad to be here now. The partnership between the county and the Camino Real Regional Mobility Authority began in 2013. Since then, the county and the RMA have been able to design, oversee, and complete construction on several transportation projects by utilizing the vehicle registration fee and general funds. The item before you is a presentation by the Camino Real Regional Mobility regarding the county's major capital transportation portfolio. I would like, I would like to now introduce the Executive Director of the RMA, Mr. Raymond Thaas.
Welcome, Mr. Thaas. Thank you for being here today.
Good morning, Judge. Thank you very much, Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to be here to present with you all today. I'll ask IT, I've got a PowerPoint with a few slides I'd like to share with you all, so if we can go to the next slide. So as mentioned by Mr. Alonso, my name is Raymond Thaas. I am the Executive Director of the Camino Real Regional Mobility Authority. Over the years, I've met with most of you all, but I'm happy to meet with you all. Should you have any additional questions, feel free to reach out. This is what we're going to be talking about today. Items one and two should be pretty brief. I think most of you all know generally about regional mobility authorities and specifically about the Camino Real here in El Paso, excuse me. Item number three is the Comprehensive Mobility Plan. I'll touch briefly on that, because that really was the reason for the vehicle registration fee, and that's really where we're going to spend most of our time. Next slide, please. Again, please stop me if you have any questions along the way. So generally speaking, RMA's Regional Mobility Authorities are political subdivisions of the state of Texas. Fancy way of saying we are another governmental body. What makes us unique is that we are authorized specifically to develop, operate, and maintain transportation projects. So that's a really key term. Excuse me, in the legislation that governs regional mobility authorities, transportation project is a defined term, and it includes everything that you see there in the second paragraph. So it's everything that deals with mobility. So when you look in that list, there's everything from highways and roadways, hike and bike paths, airports, rail, ferries, you name it. If it moves, we can be involved in it, including mass transit and even aerial tramways, which we have here, of course, through our Wyler aerial tramway. So again, generally speaking, if it deals with mobility, we can do it, and we can be involved in it. Next slide, please. Now, the, a really important point about regional mobility authorities are the flexibility. While we can do any type of mobility project, we can also be a part of any, part of a mobility project. So that includes everything from financing, planning, designing, constructing, maintaining operations, any piece or the whole of a project. And you can see there, too, some of the other key abilities of an RMA. We've got eminent domain powers, we can cross jurisdiction lines very easily, we can enter into local, state, and federal agreements for local, state, and federal funds, that sort of thing. We can toll, we can generate fees and fares, all that sort of thing. One unique thing there, you can see in the last bullet, is that we're not a taxing entity. In fact, we are an unfunded agency. However, we can utilize another governmental body's taxing ability or other assets that they may have. Next slide, please. The next couple of slides are just some highlights of some of the projects we've been involved in. For example, on the left-hand side, it shows a number of projects that we were involved in in the 2008 Comprehensive Mobility Plan. That center photo there is an aesthetic project that we did, that we partnered with the City of El Paso and Tech dot on. In the northeast of El Paso, we developed the aesthetic improvements to the retaining walls. That was liked so well by Tech Dot that they actually utilized that design on the northwest side as well. We've been involved since 2007 in projects everywhere from Vinton to Neo and everything in between. Next slide, please. We've been involved in over $1 billion worth of project development since 2007, and we are in fact governed by a board of seven El Paso. And six of our board members are appointed by city council, while the chair is appointed by the governor. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is the Comprehensive Mobility Plan, as mentioned by Mr. Alonso. In 2013, a partnership was developed by Tech Dot, the MPO, the county, and the Regional Mobility Authority to identify about $400 million worth in major transportation projects. So this is, this is what started this relationship. Next slide, please. As part of that partnership, the county agreed to develop, to implement, an optional vehicle registration fee. In essence, what you're doing is you're including an additional $10 on all of the vehicle registrations throughout the county. That $10 goes into a separate account. That account was then assigned to the Regional Mobility Authority, and we use that pledge from the county to go out and make two separate bond issuances. And you see those in the bullets there before you. Excuse me, in May of 2014, we issued 68 million. In April of 17, another 34.7 million. So well over $100 million has been issued for development of projects identified by the county. So what we've done in this partnership is that the county provided the funding, the repayment source, we went out and issued the debt, and the county also provided the priorities, the priority projects to be developed by the Regional Mobility Authority. And that's really how this relationship works. Next slide, please. So procedurally, let's talk about how that actually works. As I mentioned, the county of El Paso has provided us a list of projects that they want developed, and we develop those projects in accordance with that priority list. But in terms of how we actually do it, the first step is identified there in that first bullet. We enter into an interlocal agreement with the county, and within that original interlocal agreement, by way of example, I'll give you a design and construction project. So the first interlocal agreement we would enter into, you all would provide us access to the vehicle registration fee funds. So what that means is, while you have assigned all of those revenues to us, we can't use them without a specific interlocal agreement that authorizes us to access those funds for a particular project. So that's a way for you to know that we won't be developing a project without your blessings. So the first agreement, again, is an interlocal whereby you tell us, this is the project we want to do, and here are the funds for the initial design activities. Once we have that interlocal in place, then we go out and we engage the engineering firms, we engage oversight firms and that sort of thing through work authorizations. Then the next step, once we've completed that, those design activities, and I should mention, Mr. Alonso is all over the place all the time, as you know. Specifically, in this particular program, he's at all the design, he's involved in our design procurements, he's involved in our selections, he's involved in our design activities, design meetings, and that sort of thing. So really, you all are heavily involved in the program. The next step, then, once we've completed a design program, is that we'll come back with an interlocal amendment. So that amendment will then provide us access to the construction funds for the next stage. So then we'll go out and use Lowbit to select someone to construct that particular project. Next slide, please. Here's a map of the Comprehensive Mobility Plan that, so all those projects that you see highlighted there, those are the projects that were identified by the county as high priority projects, and we've developed those. Next slide, please. Here are the projects that have been completed so far. Some of the larger ones, you'll see there, Manny Aguilera, we did that roadway for you all. Eastlake Boulevard Phase 2, we're currently developing that initial, another stretch of Eastlake. So a lot of projects there that you see, some of the role there, you can, you can see that, as I mentioned before, we're very flexible. We can provide the financing for you, we can do the design and construction, we can just do the design, just do the construction. It really depends on what you all are looking for, we can, we can provide that role for you. Next slide. These are the projects that are currently underway. As we complete a project, thankfully, normally, we are under budget. So what we do is we roll those remaining funds into the general VRF program, and then that allows us to pursue additional projects. So you'll see there some of the projects that we're currently involved in, and up in the narrative there, you see some of the priorities that have been identified for the next round of projects to be developed. Tom Maze, by way of example, Mott Woodby, Sol Sol, and Rojas Phase 2. Next slide, please. So this is the last slide I've got for you, and this talks a little bit about the financial side and the involvement and the partnership that we have with county finance folks. We developed, to make sure that you all are up to date, we developed a shared folder with you all, where we drop into that folder all sorts of documentation to keep you all up to date on where we are in terms of financing. So you'll see here in the, in these two paragraphs, some of the things that we share with you all. By way of example, we have, actually, in the second paragraph, I think that's a really key point, we've engaged a third-party CPA from a local firm that does audits of our bond program to make sure that all of our funds are spent appropriately and reported appropriately, and those reports come to you all, you all have those. Mr. Hargrove Wally has access to all of those documents. We also include Mr. Alonso in all of our weekly project meetings and that sort of thing. So this slide is really just to illustrate how you all are engaged, not only on the design and construction activities, but also on the financial activities and the monitoring and the reporting as well. So I think that's all I have for you. Next slide, please. That's it. So that's what I've got for you. I'm happy to answer any questions, or if you all would like to meet with me personally, I'm happy to visit with any and all of you to either get into more detail about this particular program or to talk about other projects as well.
Thank you, Raymond. And Sal, any additional comments that you'd want to add?
Yes, Judge, thank you. Again, I just want to give special thanks to Raymond and his staff and our GEC Atkins for them able to assist the county on several projects. There's a lot of projects, a lot of moving parts, as you know, in construction and design, and with the additional services that the RMA and Atkins provides, it has helped us tremendously in moving projects along. The list that he has shown previously is a lengthy list. We're not done with it yet, and we're happy to, you know, keep on moving forward with new projects, of course, but I just want to say a thank you for Raymond, for being here today, and his staff, and the court's support on this partnership that we began in 2013. When I was looking at the date when we started and looking at where we're now, it's been a long time already, and it didn't seem, it didn't seem like it, because every time that me and Raymond talk, it always seems like, you know, we've been doing this for a while. But again, we'll be happy to answer any questions the court may have, but that's all we had as far as the presentation. So thank you.
And Raymond, thank you. I appreciate your, you know, openness to meeting with us, because I think sometimes, like, we'll have certain projects, and we'd like to see how they sort of fit in to the overall picture, you know, and your partnership with public work has been excellent, and, you know, your presence, whenever we have grant openings, we thank you. I know it's busy, but we thank you when you're there as well. So I don't know if there's any questions? Yeah, Commissioner Stout?
Thanks, Mr. Thaas. Good to see you. Appreciate the presentation, Sal. Good to see you as well. Just one question. I saw that on the, I think it was slide five, it shows a 2008 Comprehensive Mobility Plan, and it includes land acquisition for the Northeast bypass. Do you know whether that's been completed yet or not?
I do not believe so. The Northeast bypass, the one, it's now referred to as the Borderline Expressway, I believe, is the one you're referring to?
Yes.
I know, so, the real answer is, I'm not 100%, but I can certainly find out. So the last I heard about the land acquisition was that Tech Dot is discussing that with El Paso Water, because the majority of the, of the land necessary for that particular project will go through El Paso Water Utility Land. But let me get some details, and I'll share that with you when I, as soon as I get some.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you could share with all of us, it'd be, it'd be nice to get that feedback.
Certainly, I'll share with Mr. Alonso, and I'll ask him to provide it to the court.
Excellent. Any, Commissioner Leon, please?
Good morning, Mr. Thaas and Sal. Good to see you both. I have a quick question, might be more towards the Sal arena. On the, on one of the slides, you show Pelicano is complete. It might be complete, I guess, in the planning stages or the financing, but the construction is not, is that correct?
That is correct, Commissioner. I think the slide that you're referring to was the ongoing projects. The design is, as you know, obviously, complete, and we're currently under construction as far as that project is going. So you are correct. Construction is not complete.
Thank you.
You are.
Any questions? Hearing none?
May I ask a question, Judge?
Commissioner Olgin, please.
Hi, Mr. Thaas, good morning. Is there any way that we could get a timeline for the projects or Sal, perhaps? Maybe I could get this from Sal. Just a rough timeline of when we think that the pending projects will be completed or when they're scheduled to be completed?
Absolutely. Yes.
Thank you.
Well, there's no further questions, so we thank you both. Raymond, thank you for being here with us today, and Sal, thank you for coordinating this important presentation, and we look forward to periodic presentations going forward.
Happy to do it. Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners. Thank you.
Item number eight. ARPA Project Number 1370. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding a proposed partnership with the Paso del Norte Community Foundation and Paso del Norte Health Foundation for establishment and management of the El Paso County American Rescue Plan Act Notice of Funding Opportunity for Nonprofit Agencies.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. So Salonzo, County Administration, bringing this item before the court this morning solely for direction. We are posted for action, but the only action that we're asking for the court, of the court this morning, is to provide some direction. As you recall, in As you recall, in October, when the portfolio was established, there was some direction given to staff to evaluate options on creating a formal notice of funding opportunity to disburse the $9.7 million that the court has set aside for nonprofit support, given the fact that we received a few applications informally and we expected to receive more applications after the fact. The court decided to ensure that we had a process in place that was fair, that was competitive and transparent. As we evaluated options for creating and implementing a grant making process, we recognized very quickly that it's something that we internally at the county don't have familiarity or experience with. We're very successful in developing grants and going after grants, but grant making is an entirely different process with unique set of responsibilities. As we thought through options to ensure that we could deploy these funds as quickly and as strategically as possible, we reached out to the foundation who does have significant experience in soliciting applications and have a team that can provide some technical assistance to the county for that front end portion. And so what we are, the the intent of the item this morning is to present that the proposed scope of work and the fees were attached in the backup. There's a variety of things that we would like to pursue a partnership with the foundation on to assist the county in establishing this intake process. Effectively, the county would rely on the partnership with the foundation to solicit applications. The foundation's consulting team would also be able to help develop the guidelines for nonprofits who would be seeking funding from the county. They would be then charged with meeting with each member of the court to also help develop that those parameters and those priorities for funding. The court discussed previously whether, you know, large capital items should be included or not. And so there's a lot of different opportunities to decide what projects and what purposes this funding would be set aside for. There was also discussion about limiting it to things that the county is directly engaged in, providing services for in some way, shape or form. All that to say, that needs to be managed and articulated in a single strategic document that then is set aside and and pushed out to the public for as part of the call for grant submissions. And the consultant would help develop that based on the priorities that the court would also said would help developing would help develop a scoring matrix to actually evaluate those applications so that we know how to rate those applications. There is an option whether or not to allow, whether or not to hire paid evaluators to rank the applications based on the guidance that the court has. Or there is an option for the the court to identify staff to evaluate those. Just depending on the amount of applications we receive could be a pretty daunting task on staff. And so we do think that the option of of professional paid evaluators is something that the court should consider. And then the last phase, once the applications are solicited and received ranked score, would then be creating a recommendation with a detailed one page sheet per per agency or per proposal that could then be shared with the court for your review, your consideration. We would bring that item back to the court and at that point, the court would award the funds to the agencies that it felt were merited funding. And then upon that award, the county would be completely in control of the contracting, dispersment of funds, tracking of the funds, working directly with the nonprofit agencies. Our partnership with the foundation would be limited to the front end of the application process to actually receive ranked score, the applications and all the tasks that are associated with that initial phase. And that's the part that we don't, internally at the county, have a lot of experience in managing. And so that's the reason why we thought working with a partner like the foundation would be a good idea. Joined this morning by Ms. Tracy Ellen and Dr. Michael Kelly from the foundation, who can answer any specific questions with respect to the scope. But this morning, again, we're asking, pushing in direction that this is something the court would like us to formally pursue so that we can then begin working on agreement with the foundation and bring that back to court for future approval. So I'm available to take any questions that you may have.
Good morning, Tracy. How are you today? I think you're you're frozen, Tracy, or we can't hear you.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners and Jose.
I think she got disconnected. I think she got disconnected. Yes.
And we, who else do we have?
Yeah, Tracy, Tracy did get disconnected. She's she's trying to reconnect right now. She just told me.
Okay, thank you.
I'm I'm happy to try to answer anything in the meantime.
Any comments would help us just to get a broader, you know, understanding?
Just a second. She's going to take over my headset here.
Okay. Good morning, Tracy.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners and Judge. I apologize. Thank you, Michael, for being so text savvy. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So we appreciated Jose reaching out to us and of course, our honor to be of service. We did look at being able to provide this just on an in kind basis. And our staff are are so booked with a lot of the different grant making and COVID outreach and other work that we're doing. So we, the cost really reflects what direct cost would be to engage a and manage a consultant on our team to help provide this the support. And that is Jose also noted, if you wanted to add, you know, paid reviewers or to compensate a review team or if that would be in house. And of course, we would be, if you would want to be forward with this, working at your direction. And so we wouldn't select the organizations or establish the criteria. We would work with you to create, you know, the process and criteria and review so that you would be able to make those decisions. So we're happy to use our technology and resources and know how. And really, Dr. Kelly has so much experience leading teams and going through, you know, hundreds of proposals a year that we develop in our priority areas in health, that are health foundation, grant making and mental health, diabetes, you know, nutrition, physical activity, et cetera. So we work with a lot of the nonprofits in the community in evaluating proposals to meet certain objectives. So happy to be of service if that's value, you know, of interest.
And Dr. Kelly, would you like to, any additional comments, please?
Thank you. You know, I think some of the pros and cons of the the reviewers I'd like to comment on. The the review could be very heavy. There's no telling how many proposals could come in. And by having some paid reviewers, I think you could cause them to review all the proposals and have more consistency across them all and create some obligation that these reviewers really use due diligence versus any kind of community volunteer. And and I think a hybrid, which would involve county staff on the review team, either as scorers or observers, is is a prudent idea as well. So other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. And Judge, if I may add, one of the, one of the items that we discussed when we were developing, when we met with with Tracy and with with Dr. Kelly was how much control the court would have in in setting the parameters, deciding what the priorities would be, deciding what funds might be. Also, questions that we have not asked, answered yet, which include items like, is there a maximum award? Is there a minimum award? Are there priorities or projects that the court has in mind that we'd like to see us, you know, put a stronger emphasis on? Are there uses or projects that you would like to disqualify for funding? Those are all some of the questions that this consultant team led by the foundation would be able to help gain a sense of and then ultimately draft a document that would again, back to the court before being approved and put out to the public for for notice. And then even something as small as the use of an electronic website to actually receive all of the submissions, that allows us to have a more consistent submission structure, which makes it easier to rate the applications. So just a lot of various operational issues that that we could work on implementing, but it would take us some time to do so. And given the fact that the court wants, and we share that at the staff level, disburse these funds as as quickly as possible, we feel that this is a pretty good partnership to explore on the front end of of this grant making process.
Thank you. Just as always, Betsy, if you could put it sort of in perspective of what it means to us in the overall picture and maybe a few comments on that. Betsy?
Yes, sir. So also because so many of us, for the public's benefit as well, the county set aside, the Commissioners' Court set aside $9.7 million out of its ARP funding because we had several requests far exceeding $9.7 million. But out of what you were able to allocate from the budget for ARP, you allocated $9.7 million for grants for various agencies requesting assistance through our ARP funding. And by using PDN, as we're proposing, to put out the notice of funding opportunity, accept applications, develop, but even before that, to develop criteria by working with you all, taking your input individually and then proposing an overall criteria to you all, the court still maintains complete control. It provides us some staffing resources to to do this process as it will be, I imagine, fairly labor intensive at the beginning of the application process. And then that would allow the court to see the final recommend recommended applicants, but you will always maintain control. You could choose to award less. You'll be able to choose to award more. You'll be able to prioritize it as you see fit. But the but the foundation would seek input from each member of the court on that criteria before we release the notice of funding opportunity.
Excellent. Excellent. Commissioners, any questions, comments at this time? Commissioner Leon, please?
Yes, Betsy, just real quick. So the difference between us doing it internally or going with PDN is a difference of $5,000?
No, sir. So what, I believe what Jose proposed in the backup, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jose, but one of them is us, PDN doing everything for us, correct, Jose? Versus PDN only doing the first portion for us, correct?
That's correct. The the difference is the stipend for the reviewers. And so the option B, the one that the one that is slightly higher, includes us providing a stipend for for a paid set of reviewers to review all the applications and score them. And as Dr. Kelly mentioned, the benefit of that is is people with experience in, you know, rating and receiving applications, a consistent response. And also, we can set timelines. If we if we don't pay, we'd have to identify internal resources and staff to to do that, we would still get the we would, you'd still have the same consistent review because you'd have the same consistent review team. But this would be on top of existing workload and it might slow down the process of making a recommendation to the court. So we feel that we should have some paid reviewers and then we should also task some internal staff to be part of that, have a hybrid approach. Or as Dr. Kelly suggested, maybe observe the rating process and just ensure that the raters are capturing the priorities and objectives.
And Commissioner, I know this is in addition to your question, but I do want to add, this is, we've talked and we've been looking at how much other agencies use out of their ARP funds, how much of it's going to administrative cost versus how much is going directly to the intent of the the program. And in this particular proposal, the proposal is less than 1% of the cost that of the funding that will be available to the agencies. So I think this is a very, very reasonable, extremely reasonable use of ARP funding.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Commissioner Stout?
Yeah. Appreciate presentation. I just had a couple of 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 questions, I guess, that I wasn't clear on. When you talked about the scope, the scope of work, talking about the consultants developing the RFP and the score sheet and construction by preparing questions and holding the listening sessions with groups selected by the county. How will the county, how's the county going to select those groups?
So it's over the next few weeks, if if we do get the the green light from the court to proceed on developing the agreement, we'll be working with the foundation to have, I guess, some listening sessions first directly with the court. And then I think in that process, we can identify any other groups that might be necessary to provide feedback to the the process and the structure with the recognition that we want to move as quickly as we can on this. And so we'll be working on on those paths as concurrently as possible. Just given the limited meeting dates we have over the next few weeks because of holidays this month as well as in January. So we would work on on those with the foundation pretty quickly to start getting some some guidance and feedback from the court on what should be included and who else should get a chance to provide feedback on this.
So those those listening sessions are are going to be with the court, not not with the with with the rankers or or I can't remember what you're, the name that you have for the reviewers, yeah?
Right. So a perfect example would be, you know, and I I think previously in October, the court discussed, should we be funding large capital infrastructure projects for agencies? And it would be a conversation, you know, where each member of the court would be able to decide or or speak to whether or not they feel that certain priorities should be given to certain agencies, certain uses should not be permitted. All of that feedback with your, you and your office's ideas would be received by the consultant team to actually help draft the final document. So we'd be herding all those ideas into one cohesive strategic document.
Okay, so so those will be held in open meetings. But I also want to understand if there's going to be any further public outreach because I, again, I I feel like we didn't do enough public outreach as we, you know, I mean, we could have done this process to to assess community needs and before deciding the money we're putting in the bucket, in this bucket. But, you know, we took, we took a lot of the money for UMC and for the water and sewer, but and then we put county items before hearing from the community. And so I don't want to just have like a Commissioners' Court meeting in the middle of the day where people can't show up to participate and and do the bare minimum as I feel that we've done in the past. I feel like we should really involve the community at a high level when it comes to deciding how this money is going to be spent. And so I want to, I want to make that, make that plea and and ask that we that we do as much as possible to to make that to make that happen. Also, when the, it it also talks about writing draft requests for proposals and associate and and associated score sheet based on the feedback from the listening sessions for review and modifying the RFP and score sheet. And then it'll be presented to the county for final approval. I think I heard you say, you know, you're trying to work on that quickly. But what's the timeline, what's the optimal timeline on that? And also, there's other tasks that include answering applicant questions, making the site visits and reviewing the the budgets and and then the the final presentation to the Commissioners' Court with the recommendations. What are, where, what is the the proposed timeline or optimal timeline that we're looking at for those actions?
We we discussed that very tentatively with the foundation. And I did impress upon them that we want to them that we want to move these funds as quickly as possible. So I think we need to look at what, we need to put together a timeline specifically that addresses what can happen concurrently, what needs to obviously happen sequentially. The timeline that I'd like to see, that I'd like to recommend to the foundation to be our goal, and you know, this is something the court agrees to, would be to having this no-fo out by end of February, beginning of March. That might be very aggressive, but I think the funds, you know, we continue to get requests and for updates on where we are with this process from nonprofits, and so I think the need is very significant. And so after that, we look at how many applications are received and, you know, the due diligence, obviously the more applications we receive, the longer it's going to take to pay the review team to go through those, or the longer it's going to take for the review team to go through those applications. So that second part might be up in the air just a little bit because of it being dependent on how much, how many applications we have to go through. But I think it's reasonable to think that by late spring, early summer, we might have agreements coming before the court to disperse funding out to these nonprofit agencies.
Thank you.
And Commissioner, we'll work on that outreach. We're working on an outreach plan in general for the ARPA portfolio as a whole to let the community know what's been identified in there. And so with respect to this, you know, there's no centralized nonprofit hub. Previously, there was a nonprofit enterprise center years ago that served its role to try and bring all the nonprofits together. So we'll have a little bit of a task ahead of us to make sure that we let all the nonprofits in the community know that this is out there, but we'll be sure to share that outreach strategy working with Dr. Agos and with the court through highlights so that if there's any opportunity to tweak it, refine it, we can make sure to address any concerns the court may have.
Yeah, thank you. I really think that we should do more to try to bring this information to the public instead of expecting them to just come here and get it, you know, I mean, we need to do...
Any further comments, questions, Commissioners? Nope.
Mr. Landeros is only asking for direction. Mr. Landeros, did you receive the direction needed? Did you need more from the court?
Oh, I think he's asking for...
No, just, yeah, thank you, Mr. Robinson, just wanted to ensure that the court concurs with the requested action. The requested direction is to direct staff to develop a contract utilizing option two from the paid reviewers with the foundation to thereby establish the El Paso County American Rescue Plan Act Notice of Funding Opportunity for Nonprofit Agencies.
Betsy, you okay with that? That captures...
If you all are...
Yeah. Yeah.
Commissioner Robinson, you might be muted on your phone.
You're still muted, Commissioner? Can you check your phone to see if you're not muted, please? I'm going to go ahead and call you back, Commissioner? We still can't hear you on the phone.
Commissioner Hogan, can you give me just a quick mic check?
I'm sorry, me?
Okay, yes. Okay, we'll double-check your...
Okay. You can hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you, Commissioner Hogan. We still can't hear Commissioner Robinson. Okay, I'm going to disconnect your phone and call you back, Commissioner Robinson. Let me try one more time. Go ahead and speak, Commissioner. I thought I heard something.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir, yes, we can.
Ah, great, great, great. I'm sorry about, we have a technical difficulty here, but I just want to comment on the public need, the listening session. It's imperative that we have a unified listening session. It's imperative that we be open to all public individuals. I have participated in several listening sessions with the Department of Army, Department of Defense, in particular in this. The more exposure and input that you have, I feel the better opportunity we have for success in this endeavor. So once again, the listening session should be open to all parties in our community. Make sure that we get any input from those. And it's most important that we, the listening session, that we listen.
Yes, sir. We'll make sure to include that and put that together in the outreach plan that we share with the court.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are you, Jose?
Judge, so thank you for the direction from the court. We'll begin working on this contract with PDN and bring that back sometime in January for the court's approval. And in the interim, we'll begin working, as was discussed here, on the outreach plan for putting this out to the public, increasing awareness on it, and we'll provide those updates due to weekly highlights to the court.
Okay. Thank you, Jose. And thank you, Tracy and Dr. Kelly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, have a great, a great day. Thank you.
Thanks. Happy holidays.
Bye-bye. Likewise. Thank you. Okay, Caesar.
No further action on item number eight. Item number nine, discuss and give feedback regarding the Honorable Enrique Moreno courthouse display.
Betsy?
Judge, Commissioners, we played this, we placed this item on the agenda. We're very, very proud of the Enrique Moreno displays that have been created. We do have a couple issues that we're working with the sculptor on as far as the statue and as the display in front of the courthouse, the book. We're getting those corrected, but we do, as we're making this final change on the statue to add a little bit of height, we're going to have to, there's a correct terminology, but it's mounted to the floor, so we're going to have to remove, remove it, remove that mount, fix it, and remount it. But we did want to ask if the court had any feedback or anything that you all wanted to see while we're making these last changes.
Well, I guess, I don't know why so many people have commented on moving it to the left-hand side, because it gets startled. I mean, I don't, but so many people have told me that as they're walking in and they turn the corner that it startles them, especially when nobody's there. And so I also think if by moving it to the left side, you're able to see, you know, the statue from beginning to end. And so anyway, just comments people have asked me to pass on, but it'll be up to the court to see if that makes more sense or if that's necessary. But this would be the time because of the, having, you know, increased the height and then you'd have the opportunity to move it to the left side. But like I said, for some reason, that's been a, a lot of people have brought it up to my attention that it just startles them as they turn that corner. So anyway, that's the only comments I've received, but everybody else seems to be very happy with the display and the statue and everything else.
Betsy, what's the additional cost?
I believe that there's no cost to us because it was a sculpture error on the height of the statue.
Okay, thank you.
The book, on the book, I believe there is going to be, we're looking at adding like a step around so that people could step up to see the book. Very professional, it will not be like a hazard or anything of that nature, but that I believe will be at our cost.
You know, one of the things I thought, and I don't know how to connect it, I'll just sort of bring it up, is that, you know, Richard Castro has an incredible office there that he sort of kept it as a museum for Enrique Moreno, and I thought it would be nice for people to know that and maybe something nice, you know, that's placed either in the display or whatever to let people know that there's this, it's just a really nice place. It's got everything the way he had it, some of the books that he read. It's just a very amazing museum kind of for Enrique Moreno. So I thought, sort of behooves us to connect that that exists and most people might not know about it. I don't know, I haven't asked Richard how open that is or how it's being used or if people need to set an appointment, but if you could just look into that, Betsy, and see if there's some connection. I'd hate that people not know that there's something else nearby.
Sure, we'd be glad to check with Mr. Castro.
Did you see what kind of synergisms we could create with that building that's close by?
Did we engage the family to ask if they felt anything one way or the other, or what they thought, if there, anything should be changed or, I don't know, it seems to me that that would be a good...
I think the only comment was the height of the, from...
The height was a concern, I know. Commissioner Robinson, did, you may have more feedback for us?
You're muted again on your phone, Commissioner?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. We, as I said, we selected the committee to perform this task. We labored very strenuously to make sure that it makes you was recognized properly. The items that we have on display, I said, we labored to see what would be best to place to put them in ten two-way spin. Moving the statue, in my opinion, and based on, based on the discussion that we, the extensive discussion that we had, the committee, to include the family that had input in this endeavor, I would think we'd be doing a disservice to move the statue. Now, the height of the statue, the platform, that wasn't, that's necessary. The book on the outside, we should be lowered. We recognize that, that was an error on our part and that's our all concern. But I would not be in favor of moving the statue. And if we did make a change, it is incumbent to have input from the family and the committee.
Agreed, Commissioner. But I, and I think you're absolutely right, Commissioner. I think it would be, I mean, it is feedback, I mean, from employees who are important to us as well, so if you could take it back to the committee and that that decision, they can make that decision for themselves, but it's just, I think it's, it's good feedback, you know, for whatever reason, and then the committee can make that determination with the family, of course.
Well, I would have no problem doing that. I will, given input from the committee, and we'll go from there.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Betsy, anything else?
No, sir, that was all.
I was also going to, I was also going to ask, one thing that I noticed, like on the, on the front of the courthouse, like right above the sign, there's like some white streaks. I don't know if that can be cleaned up as we're talking about this because it would make it look a lot nicer, I mean, with the, with the sign up there and everything.
I haven't seen that. Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, Betsy, for bringing that up and...
Thank you, sir.
And addressing those...
This brings us to item number 10, executive session. Commissioners' Court will now recess into executive session to discuss items 10A and 10B pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.074. Commissioners' Court will reconvene to take official action.
Thank you. Thank you.
Most of us have pets and we know that we have to take care of them and give them a home with love. But when our resources are not enough, we need to find out a better life for them. Fortunately, here in El Paso, the Animal Welfare Department is here to help. My main job is to protect, capture and care for animals, educate the community.
We do everything from our trucks, we do foster transportations, we do adoptions, we do microchipping.
El Paso County is one of the largest counties in the state of Texas, and its Animal Welfare Department has only eight officers to cover all the land outside the city.
The county is very big in terrain, it's bigger than the city actually, but the houses are kind of sporadic, it's a lot of terrain to cover.
Today's mission is to collect some puppies and a little pig on the outskirts of the county. From a man who no longer has enough resources to support them. In 2020, the Animal Welfare Department rescued a total of seventeen hundred and sixty-nine animals, of which two hundred and thirty-one were returned to their owners and four hundred and eighteen were adopted. After giving them any information about the spay and neuter services, Ericko takes the puppies and the little pig to a shelter on the other side of the county, where they will find a family for them.
The name of the rescue here is Almost Home and it's a big foster, fifty-eight of ours. They help us a lot with our transition, so these dogs don't set food at the shelter at the animal services.
After leaving the animals in good hands, Ericko drives away to a new mission.
El Paso goes by many names: Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early nineteen hundreds, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce, with seventy-two percent of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large US cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the US-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers seventy-four bachelors, seventy-four masters, and twenty-two doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business. But we also keep true to our southern hospitality. With plenty of outdoor recreation options, it's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
Most of us have pets, and we know that we have to take care of them and give them a home with love. But when our resources are not enough, we need to find out a better life for them. Fortunately, here in El Paso, the Animal Welfare Department is here to help. Every morning, the officers of the El Paso County Animal Welfare Department get into their trucks and set off for different parts of the county to help citizens with their pets.
My main job is to protect, capture, and care for animals, educate the community. We do everything from our trucks, we do foster transportations, we do adoptions, we do microchipping.
El Paso County is one of the largest counties in the state of Texas, and its Animal Welfare Department has only eight officers to cover all the land outside the city.
The county is very big in terrain, it's bigger than the city actually, but the houses are kind of sporadic, it's a lot of terrain to cover.
Today's mission is to collect some puppies and a little pig on the outskirts of the county. From a man who no longer has enough resources to support them. In 2020, the Animal Welfare Department rescued a total of 1,769 animals, of which 231 were returned to their owners and 418 were adopted. After giving the man information about the spay and neuter services, Ericko takes the puppies and the little pig to a shelter on the other side of the county, where they will find a family for them.
The name of the rescue here is Almost Home, and it's a big foster, 58 hours. They help us a lot with our transition, so these dogs own, set food at the shelter at the animal services.
After leaving the animals in good hands, Ericko drives away to a new mission.
El Paso goes by many names: Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally-recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved, and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce. With 72% of our population being bilingual, we stay competitive among other large US cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally-recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the US-Mexico border, provides students the opportunity to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business, but we also keep true to our southern hospitality, with plenty of outdoor recreation options. It's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
Most of us have pets, and we know that we have to take care of them and give them a home with love. But when our resources are not enough, we need to find out a better life for them. Fortunately, here in El Paso, the Animal Welfare Department is here to help. Every morning, the officers of the El Paso County Animal Welfare Department get into their trucks and set off for different parts of the county to help citizens with their pets.
My main job is to protect, capture, and care for animals, educate the community. We do everything from our trucks, we do foster transportations, we do adoptions, we do microchipping.
El Paso County is one of the largest counties in the state of Texas, and its Animal Welfare Department has only eight officers to cover all the land outside the city.
The county is very big in terrain, it's bigger than the city actually, but the houses are kind of sporadic, it's a lot of terrain to cover.
Today's mission is to collect some puppies and a little pig on the outskirts of the county. From a man who no longer has enough resources to support them. From a man who no longer has enough resources to support them. In 2020, the Animal Welfare Department rescued a total of 1,769 animals, of which 231 were returned to their owners and 418 were adopted. After giving the man information about the spay and neuter services, Ericko takes the puppies and the little pig to a shelter on the other side of the county, where they will find a family for them.
The name of the rescue here is Almost Home, and it's a big foster, 58 hours. They help us a lot with our transition, so these dogs own, set food at the shelter at the animal services.
After leaving the animals in good hands, Ericko drives away to a new mission.
El Paso goes by many names: Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally-recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved, and so has its people. and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce, with 72% of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large US cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally-recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the US-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business. But we also keep true to our southern hospitality, with plenty of outdoor recreation options. It's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.